Thank you. So, good evening to everyone and very warm welcome to each of you to the first of two Town Council Orientation Sessions. I will introduce myself to some of you. I think Shamar, you're the only one I haven't really met, but I am Camilla Hillian. I am the Director of Social Youth Services, but this evening I will serve as your emcee. We are all, and I think I can speak on behalf of all my colleagues who are here before they got back here this evening, but we are all looking forward to the work that's ahead of us. We know that we are working together to accomplish a common goal, and that is to serve the residents of Bloomfield. So, we are looking forward to engaging in that work with you as we move forward. The Orientation Sessions will serve as a brief overview, a really brief and quick overview, of the functions of each of the Town Departments. Each department has been designated a really short window of time to go over their, the most pertinent things that they do in their department. We want to keep the presentations both engaging and informal, and we encourage you to ask questions as we go along with the presentations during, from each department. I am also soliciting your help to keep your questions and remarks brief, as there is a lot of content that we must go over this evening. India and I are keeping track of the time, and we may need to respectfully end discussions if we go over the allotted time. There will be plenty of opportunities to speak with staff and department heads during our break and at the end of the session, and I'm sure many of you had an opportunity to speak over dinner. We don't have any members of the public here this evening, but they will view later on YouTube, so we want to thank them for taking the time to learn more about the various services provided by the Town of Bloomfield. I would announce to the public, we're here, that we don't have a time allotted for public comments, so when the public comes in, they too can speak with our department's staff during the break and at the end of our session today. Lastly, just a couple of reminders, just have the booklet.
That's amazing.
It's really nice. We won't even go into the labor of love.
I do.
So, hopefully you will take time to kind of peruse through the booklet. I would like to just highlight that in the back of the booklet, we have a note section. So, if you choose to jot out some notes, you know, through the presentation, there is an area there for you to do so. And probably because it's such a glossy sheet, you have to use like a ballpoint pen, because if you use gel, it would smudge and get all over your hands. So, I think there's some ballpoint pens running around. You all know where the restrooms are. The orientation is being recorded, and we are thankful for that. Both sessions will be, and it will be posted on YouTube for your viewing in the future. And I also ask that you silence your phones as well. We have some, welcome, public, welcome. Welcome. No pressure, but we're happy to have you here. So, on that note, I have the pleasure of turning the floor over to our illustrious leader, our Town Manager, Stanley D. Hawthorne, with greetings and opening remarks.
Thank you, Camilla. And I do believe that this will be broadcast for the public as well. So, let me start. I do have prepared remarks, but I'm going to take a point of privilege, because I know that some of our officials will happily leave early, particularly some who have already served, and so some of the departmental reports probably aren't as important for them as our new councilors coming in, but it is going to be fast-paced, and we don't think you'll get bored, and I think you'll find the content interesting. But the point of privilege that I'm going to take, if you look at the program, you would see that I've got three parts. I've got the greeting, we've got the meeting now, I've got the Town Manager's office, and I've got acknowledgements at the end. So, to let staff know, we've got this timed out pretty good. First speaker, I'm going to do Parts One and Three in my opening, because I want to get the acknowledgements in while we've got everyone here. And then I'll come back in a few minutes and do my Part Two. So, now, we get to the greeting. Bear with me. Thank you all for being here. With emphasis, one week ago at this very time, our neighbors were determining who would be its elected representatives. In the meantime, and for the past few weeks, a dedicated task force, whom I will acknowledge later in the program, namely closing, continued their quiet work, having blindly selected the two dates of November 9th today and the 16th, believing that if they built it, you would come. And you didn't let us down, reflecting your commitment to building community. So, we thank you for accepting these late appointments. For those who might ask, what is building community? Well, the answer varies depending on the community. For Bloomfield, early on in my research and discovery as a candidate, there was this labeling of "nice" that had been bestowed upon the community in the middle of a worldwide infectious disease pandemic and international protests for and against Black Lives Matter. I couldn't quite fathom what it meant to be distinguished as one of the nicest places in America by the Reader's Digest, until my first visit to Bloomfield. As an unknown candidate, I traveled to the Town Center and began walking around for over five miles. While appreciating its scenic beauty, I was most impressed by its people, even those passing in cars who would wave or give the courtesy of letting me cross the street, business owners at the mall greeting and complimenting this stranger, shopping center patrons opening doors and allowing my entry first, neighbors waving from their yards or extending a greeting as we passed on the sidewalks. I felt like a celebrity when I was only an unknown stranger. By my second day in Bloomfield, I knew there must be something to this "nice" other than a label. As I entered this building for my first interview with the search committee, nervous, having gone to an initial wrong location, a mother and her young daughter, the daughter around three years old, were exiting the building as we met in the close four-year area. Before I could say anything, the three-year-old joyously greeted me. Hello, how are you? To which I quickly retorted, I'm fine, how are you? And she replied, I'm fine, have a good day. This from a three-year-old, being nice. Bloomfield had stolen my heart. In 2020, Reader's Digest honored Bloomfield as one of the nicest places in America, because its residents do heroic things every day to make your hometown an even better place to live, a direct quote. Bloomfield's neighbors have modeled its high expectations for quality and responsive services. Regardless of function, title, or task, our common mission is to build a better community, nurturing positive relationships, conscious of our diversity and our choices of equity and inclusion. Working strategically as a team, caring for neighbors, and simply being nice are key expectations to building community in Bloomfield. That's my greeting. I'm going to skip to the end, and I'm going to do acknowledgements, but not the closing. It may sound like a closing. I began my tenure on August 31st of this year. Shortly after that time, Mayor DeVithen Brown and interim Town Manager Phillip Sheen and I got together for a short public service announcement on the transition. As the new manager, I was also thinking about the transition of a new Town Council and asked their thoughts on the need for an orientation. Without hesitation, Mayor DeVithen Brown suggested a more efficient schedule for presentations and a reference document, all of which should be broadcast and shared with the community. And thus was born the format and booklet concept demonstrated this evening. Thank you, Suzette. I think it's the first time that I've called you anything other than mayor. I soon took that concept to the second meeting of the CBLT, Community Building Leadership Team. Now, in my middle part, I'm going to explain to you what the Community Building Leadership Team is, so excuse me, I'm referencing it prematurely. But I soon took that concept to our CBLT, Community Building Leadership Team, on October 6th, one month ago approximately, where we established a Town Council Orientation Task Force, who totaled the concept in short order, further executed by the full CBLT. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the task force who went above and beyond their own duties to make the Orientation Sessions complete. In alphabetical order, these are the community builders on the task force, and just wave your hand if you're here. Marie Vincennes, Abby Croto, Camilla Hillian, Yvette Hugnell, Elizabeth Lane, Delanda Lewis, Rosa Matias, Dave Malesco, India Rogers. I want to thank you so much. We couldn't have done it without you. And I'm going to make a final announcement while everyone is here. At the next orientation, next Tuesday, November 16th, prior to dinner, we have made arrangements for taking a group photo of the new Town Council. I did as well, so I hope you'll all be there for your growing photography party. If not, we'll schedule it for another day. So, with that, I think we've got an engagement exercise.
Yes. So, thank you, Mr. Hawthorne, for that wonderful call. I think we all, thank you. So, before Mr. Hawthorne goes into his presentation, we're going to bring up Nancy Hayes, who's our Purchasing and Risk Manager for the Town of Bloomfield, have an activity for you all to engage in.
Well, welcome, and congratulations to everyone. I believe I know everyone except Shamar. This is the first time I'm meeting you. Congratulations.
Very nice to meet you.
Look forward to a good two years. As part of my duties as purchasing and risk manager, I also oversee the CIP process, and that's what this exercise is for. First of all, I'm going to ask, CIP stands for capital improvement. Does anybody want to guess what might be in this bag?
Money.
Okay. But it's not just any money. This is Bloomfield bucks. Bloomfield bucks from our residents and our taxpayers. I'll speak it. And the reason I say that is because this exercise, and you have, you can do it now, not even now, you can take during the breaks and then before the start of the second half of the program, we'll finalize it. Over on the corner over there from the table, you'll see there's six capital improvement projects, and these are actual projects that are in the five-year capital improvement plan that the Town Council adopts on a regular basis. So, everyone is going to get 500 Bloomfield bucks. Now, the reason I say that it's Bloomfield bucks is because you'll notice there's six projects, they do not include roads or sidewalks, and I know those are near, they are to many of you, because I heard a lot during the budget. The reason they're not included is because we get a rather large state grant, it's called the municipal capital grant. This current, last year, we got $2.4 million, next year, we'll be getting $3.2 million. That is almost exclusively only used for transportation. When I say transportation, those mean for vehicles. So, that's where the roads and the sidewalks usually get weighed on. So, the money I'm going to give you comes to the projects that come from Bloomfield bucks, which are our taxpayers and our residents. So, I'm going to give everyone their 500 dollars.
I'm kidding. I'm not trying to raise tax.
Actually, there's, I will tell you, there will be a little bit of an opportunity, maybe later on in the program, to get more Bloomfield bucks.
Wasn't a bad question.
There's good money tomorrow.
So, and just go and put it in front of, dish in front of every project, however many, and guess what? The sad part is, we're not going to be able to forward all six. So, at the end, the ones, the top four that have the most Bloomfield bucks in them will be the projects that we will theoretically go forward with.
I like that. This is probably.
Perfect. The last six. Is that it? Is that it? The second half of the steps are.
I see the signature of the send us. You can't do everything.
We used to call it, I thought it was.
So, so you were saying, all of the projects?
Oh, the projects are rain control plants, roof replacement at the Board of Education building, basin repairs at Town Hall, senior man, parks. The parks repairs, what else did I miss?
Just to be a thing, let everyone hand this back. Yeah, these things look real.
Also trying to spin.
To be good tonight, enjoy that.
Oh, gosh. So, we have a senior boss, the Board of Education, roof replacement, basin repairs at Town Hall, change, bodyboard repair, roads, and.
Secret service.
And parks improvements. So, you get 500 dollars, now you can put 100 dollars, and there's 100 dollars in the numbers. And we might have an opportunity to earn extra bucks. Do you have any questions to how it works? Yes?
Well, this may include those staff that are supporting, it doesn't include our idea, it doesn't include the towns.
These are in the five-year capital plan, Charlie.
I know, well, we've got changes.
Well, then, don't put your money in anything. Or put it in all my money.
There you go.
And we have the real process coming later. This is just engagement.
When do we start now?
Oh, or you can go between speakers. Or you can go between speakers. That's on to Romney 12, so we can go on between speakers on behalf of.
Hold on here, money. I was expecting the Republican being the last person trying to stand.
All you have to do is put another chair up there with a green leaf.
All right, so we're going to move on to our presentations. You give some thought to how you want to spend your Bloomfield bucks, and if you're so inclined to just get up and spend your money, feel free, what you have between now and during the break to do so, as Nancy mentioned. So, first up, we have our Town Manager, Stanley Hawthorne, to go over the role in the Town Manager's Office.
Our mission as an organization, rebuild community. During President John Kennedy's administration, he toured Cape Penaperal, later renamed Cape Kennedy, in his honor from 1963 to 1973. As he walked around the facility, observing staff mesmerized by his presence, he stopped to chat with one such employee, asking, what was his job? The employee quickly and proudly answered, my job is to explore space. President would later learn that the employee's job title was custodian. However, the culture of the organization was such as to focus on the core mission of space exploration. In Bloomfield, we build community regardless of title. Let me introduce you to the community builders who join me in the Town Manager's Office, building community. Wave your hand if I don't sure everybody knows. Sharon Howell and Abby Croto. Speaking with you over the course of the evening will be members of the Community Building Leadership Team, also known as CBLT. The CBLT consists of Department Directors and other key members of our Community Building Team. The CBLT's role is critical in fulfilling the organization's mission to build desirable community. I would note that great speaker undermonitors what they're generally speaking about.
And I'm sorry, you can also file them in your booklet on page one for the Town Manager's Office. Sorry about that.
The CBLT's role is critical in fulfilling the organization's mission to build desirable community and for bridging the expectations of our three constituent groups, including community, also known as neighbors, the governing body, you, the council, and employees, also known as community builders. As such, there is a higher purpose beyond departmental responsibilities for the Community Building Leadership Team. And while we know our mission, missing pieces of the puzzle currently include our community vision, what we aspire to be years into the future, and community goals as determined by neighbors through their elected representatives, we look forward to that strategic path, hopefully led by this Town Council. In the near future, hopefully early 2022, with the kickoff of the state-required Plan of Conservation and Development, hopefully merged with or on a parallel course with the Strategic Visioning Plan, we will chart our aspirational course fueled by business planning, strategic budgeting, workforce development, and project performance management. We stand ready, as your staff, as community builders, as the Community Building Leadership Team, to build better community. And you also like, that concludes my part. Sorry, staff, for being rude. Only I'm very unselfish.
So, also, so next, as part of the Town Manager's Office, we have our Captain, India Rogers, who is the reporter for the local.
Hello, everybody. Hello, India. So, greetings to all. And her report is on page four, yeah, here. So, greetings to all who are present and the viewing audience. This is an introduction to the few, and welcome back for some. My name is India Rogers, and I am Clerk of Council. Thank you again for reappointing me to the position for another council term. This is officially my seventh term as a Clerk of Council. I am, 13 years in makeup. I am the administrative brain of the council. I am responsible for the following administrative tasks. Our your turn to create, disseminate, and authenticate records of all council proceedings for your regular meetings, your special meetings, community town halls, annual budget meetings, and council retreats. Transcription administ for those meetings as well. I coordinate meeting schedules with the council, town administration, town staff, and community stakeholders. Facilitator and host of online Zoom, webinar, video conferencing platform. I manage the Town Book pages for the main Town Council and Council Subcommittee pages. I provide written correspondence to the Heart for Cal for public legal notices. I comply with all statutory requirements for resolutions, town ordinance management of all notifications and recording, and I'm also coordinator of information gathering for all supportive documentation for media agenda items. I serve as the link on behalf of the council between the Town Manager and Town Clerk's offices to work in partnership with the council's administrative needs and requests. In addition, I closely work with each and every Town Department Head to provide administrative support with project initiatives on behalf of the Town Council. As some of you are aware, I wear several hats for the Town, or several hats here at the Town of Bloomfield. I am a full-time senior social worker with Social Youth Services.
Woo!
In addition to that role, I also provide administrative support to the Fair Run Commission as well as the Community Wearing Staff Corps. Since the arrival of our new Town Manager, I've been tasked to assist as a project lead for the Agenda Preparation Task Force. This group will review and discuss plans on how we can develop and utilize a more efficient process for handling council action goals that are derived from the respective council subcommittees and regular meetings. These are just a few highlights of my day-to-day responsibilities as a Clerk of Council. Believe me, it takes many additional hours to ensure that all records of council proceedings are accurate and transparent. Thank you for your time and attention this evening. I look forward to working with each and every one of you over the next two years, and I'm going to end my presentation with this.
That girl is.
I just want to say one thing. Tony, I cannot out-say you.
So, they can go after her every time.
Where's the assistant behind you? Because all of that stuff that you read out, I was like, boy, something.
I don't have assistants.
Okay. She doesn't sleep much.
Thank you, guys, officially. You took a job.
I don't know who's next, but you gotta step your game on. Real reason I went first.
So, does anyone have any questions for Town Manager's Office or India before we move on? Okay. Thank you all. So, we will move on to human resources and.
Well, that acts, gonna be hard to follow. I'll try a little bit here. Good evening. My name is Rosa Matias. I am the Acting Director of HR, and this is Kathy Roberts, who is the HR Generalist. We are here representing the Human Resources Department on behalf of our Director, Cassidy Colo. We are here representing the Human Resources Department on behalf of our Director, Cindy Colo, who is out on a medical leave. The role of the Human Resources Department is responsible for helping the town find qualified employees. We also provide support and services to our employees as well as to our retirees. In our commitment in finding qualified employees, we have established an affirmative action plan, which Kathy will talk a little bit about.
The town of Bloomfield is an affirmative action employer, and the town has established a voluntary plan in order to improve the female and the minority employment representation. So the HR department is responsible for overseeing the plan each year. And in order to produce this plan, what we do is we gather the data and information all year long, and along with the HRC consultant, which is the Human Resource Consortium, we put together, or they put together with us, the goals for the following year. The goals are based on the availability under the EEO job categories and are compared to what we have available in current employment population. A hard copy of the plan is kept in the HR department, but if, if any of you are interested, we can certainly provide you with a copy at a later date.
And, and our effort to reach our affirmative action goals, we have recruitment procedures that we follow for all positions for the town. When a position becomes vacant, we post it. Once the position is closed, the members of the HR department will review the applications and determine if the first event of a minimum qualification. If selected, they move forward to the next step, which could be a, um, a written exam or a board interview, or even both. The board board panel members are comprised of professionals from, uh, the field that are related in the fields of the surrounding town. Based on the candidate scores, they move forward into a final interview with the director of the department. We recruit for three collective bargaining unions as well as non-union, non-union employees. Just in case you aren't aware, I think you would be, but just in case, the three unions are Teamsters, which are the public works, uh, maintainers, and drivers, and mechanics, the facility employees, and also the minibus drivers. Our next, um, union would be the UPSHU, which is the United Public Employees Union, which comprises of declarable teams. And then the last union we have is the Fraternal Order of Police Union, which of course are the police officers and the dispatchers.
So as Rosa mentioned, part of our recruiting process is to review and select qualifying applicants. You know, we post a job, people send in their resume, their application, and then we have to go through every one of them. Sometimes we get hundreds for one job, sometimes we get four for one job. But if you haven't had the opportunity to look at the board behind Rosa, basically, this is, gives you an idea of how we recruit and how we review the employment applications. So I'm gonna ask you all to participate and help me out. So basically, what we're saying in this, we are, we're looking for a maintainer, and they work for the public, and they work for the, uh, public works department. So the first thing we do is we post minimum qualifications. So for this position, they have to have a high school diploma or a GED. They have to have two years' experience of construction and heavy vehicle driving, including experience in operating a varied of trucks and light equipment. They must have a CDL license, class B with air brakes or class A with air brakes, class A is preferred. So we have four applicants. Applicant one has a high school diploma, they have a CDL license, a CDLV license. They've been a landscaper for two years, they were an automotive worker for twenty-two years, and they are a grave, sorry, grave digger for three years. So how many people think that person should move forward, they're qualified? Nobody? Nobody? One person? Two people?
I want to hear the rest of them before I decide.
You want to hear them all first? Okay, so that's applicant one. Applicant two has a college degree. They have a CDL class A license with air brakes. They have worked in a public works, uh, removing the snowboard for four years. They were in the military, um, and they did heavy equipment for ten years, and they did tree removal for one year. Applicant three has their GED, they have a class A license with air brakes. They labor machine operator for seven years, they did building maintenance for three years, and they were a roofer for seven years. And applicant four has a high school degree, they have a class A license with the air brakes. They are a CDL delivery driver for eight years, a hotel maintenance for three years, and a custodian for five years. And what, okay, job? Job is for a maintainer too. So what they have to, they have to have a high school diploma or GED. They have to have two years' experience of construction and heavy vehicle driving, including experience in operating battery types of trucks and light equipment, CDL license. A or P, A is preferred. Okay, so let's start again. How many people think number one, should move forward in the hiring process? Yeah, one, two, two, that's it? Okay, we only have two. How about applicant number two? One, two, three, four, five, six, six, seven, seven? Okay, seven. Applicant number three? Two, three.
You're not remembering the...
You're not remembering what, what they had? They had a, okay, they had their GED, they had their class A license, they were a labor machine operator for seven years, building maintenance for three years, and a roofer for seven years.
Okay, so I'm with, I'm with three.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Got to refresh our memories.
Want me to repeat one again? Number four, they have a high school degree, they have a class A license with air brakes, they are a delivery dri, a CDL delivery driver for eight years, hotel maintenance for three years, and a custodian for five years. So we got four, okay. Okay, number one, just to refresh, was a high school diploma, class B license with air brakes, landscaper for two years, automotive worker for twenty-two years, and a grave digger for three years. Here's the thing, you can have, you don't have to pick one, just one. So here's, the bottom line is, in reality, applicant number one, applicant number two, and applicant number three would go forward to the next step. The reason applicant four does not move forward is because they have no experience with any kind of, uh, truck or light equipment. They're a CDL delivery driver. So basically, that means they're delivering your Amazon Prime packages or your WB Mason delivery, they're just driving a van. They, you know, as a custodian, you know, when they're cleaning, they're, you know, sweeping, they're doing that kind of thing, but there's no experience with the light equipment. So this is basically what we have to do for every particular job. So if we get a hundred applications, we have to sit down and move through every application and kind of do, do they meet this, do they check off, do they check off? And if they do, then they move forward to the next step, which is like Rosa said, a written exam or a board board exam. And that's how we hire for the town.
All right, in conclusion, the HR department is not only committed to hiring and recruiting, but we're also committed to administering benefits to our employees and retirees. One of the many benefits we offer our employees is a wellness program. These programs are very popular and maintain the healthy workforce that we have. Over the past few years, the HR department has implemented several wellness programs. The most popular program is our walking challenge, thanks to Kathy. It has become a friendly competition between employees. They, uh, the winner receives bragging rights all year long, and they also get a coveted parking spot of their choice in their, you know, if it's at the town hall, they'll get a parking spot there, if it's the police department, they will get a parking spot there. Uh, the walking challenge was, uh, it occurs every, uh, past, every September or so. This cast one was very successful that if the employees actually asked for a winter one. So with the New Year's resolutions and stuff like that, we're gonna start doing that one as well. So you guys are all welcome to join us. However, I don't think you're gonna meet somebody that's in this room.
That would be Abby. She's very competitive, let's just leave it at that, very competitive. Or Jean. Oh, Jean, and Nancy, Abby, yes, all of us. So if you're gonna join, you better start practicing.
Yes, so, thank you for your time, and I hope this gives you just a brief explanation, overview of what we do in the HR department.
I have a quick question, how many FTEs, you know, in the town?
I'm sorry?
FTEs, full-time, part-time employees?
Right, currently, there's about a hundred and fifty-two full-time employees. And about fifty-eight, uh, part-time.
Not talking about seasonal?
Yeah, just part-time, part-time. And that changes, you know, every month depending on if we hire, if people retire, goes up and down. Any other questions?
Thank you all very much, you did a great job.
Next up, we have our finance department, led by our finance director, Curtis Heaton, and your team. And finance department can be found on page ten.
Curtis, no music.
Huh? No music? I'm so sorry. You're talking about finance, you know? I don't understand, you know, we're kind of talking flash. We got the blue film, so. Thank you very much, uh, Kamala, for the introduction.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you so much, uh, good evening, counselors, and also to residents. Uh, thank you so much for being here. My name is Cynthia Curtis Heaton, and I am the finance director for this town. I am joined, uh, by a great and wonderful team, uh, not the entire team, but a great and wonderful team so far present. I have to my left, Sharon Gentile Harris. I have to my right, uh, Scott Charlo. To my far right, Nancy Higgins. The finance department is the biggest, one of the biggest departments, I would say. We are critical in assisting all the departments in making sure that they provide the services necessary to, the resources necessary to serve the community. The finance department is made up of five divisions. The first division is administration, which is led by Sharon Gentile Harris, or AKA Ugo Harris. Great on focusing on accounting, payroll, and audit. Our tax collector, Jean Kitchens, Jean, can you wave your hand? Which focuses on collecting taxes, uh, monitoring delinquent taxes, and issuing our tax bills, which is one of our core functions as municipal governments. The next department is our purchasing and risk department. Also keeps us out of trouble and makes sure we follow all, uh, procedures, monitors bids, creates RFPs, requests for proposals, uh, and maintains and monitors our insurance policies. So we have to make sure that these things happen. And then our successor, which we currently are vacant, but we're looking with the assistance of HR, uh, HR, propose, uh, due to property revivals, grant list development, and the administration of state, uh, and town exemptions for our residents and community. We are the leaders of the budget process. We help prepare the budget. We assist in departments in creating and preparing their budgets. The budget is simply one of the most important, uh, documents that is created by municipal government. It details all of the expenses and revenues that a municipality needs to provide quality service for its citizens for a full year. It's the time where we get together to create a blueprint of what are priorities for the community and to make sure those priorities are executed. We are the collector and the protector of information and the funds. We account for all the dollars to make sure that there's accountability, to make sure we are following all the procedures, to make sure both state and federal, uh, guidelines are created. This capable team does a wonderful job, works hard, makes my job a little easier. And I'm glad to be here to work with them. We are the protector of your important information. We keep all information secure and protected from nefarious elements. Uh, and the most important person that deals with that is our director of information, uh, technology, information systems and technology, led under the direction of, uh, Scott Charlo. And I will turn it over to him to talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Curtis, um, for providing that description of Bloomfield's information systems and technology department. The IST department has grown since I started in December of twenty thirteen, um, so... I guess there is a little multimedia. So actually, that sound is the drone of, uh, one of our server rooms, all right? And if you click it, it'll actually stop. But I, I jokingly say that the IST department is now responsible for anything with a plug, because that's pretty much what it's grown and beaten. And although we've not had any calls yet about toasters or microwave, but we're still waiting for that. The slide presented here shows and wins several of the IST department's core competencies. It's really hard to see, but I believe it's gonna be, um, kind of slid into your package later on. But, you know, they are email, help desk, phones, computers, work, um, you know, all of our common understanding of technology these days. Uh, that being said, in the center, you'll see a photo, which is actually, the video is actually rotated, because obviously, technology doesn't do what you really hope to do, even as much as you try. You'll see a photo taken in one of our main data facilities at town hall. And in each of our facilities, the town maintains these data centers, with backup power, dedicated temperature controls, network and security equipment, phone systems, radio gear, just a lot of plugs. These facilities are the heart of information flow throughout the town. And if you dig up the, the deeper than that, you'll see some green blinking lights. Uh, these green lights are, aren't just one piece of that equipment, and this equipment is our network switch. And that's what I wanted to focus on today. A network switch takes data from its source and sends that data to the destination. It also provides a path back from the destination to the source. So without the switch and the blinking lights, there isn't communication. So when I go into one of our data centers, I often think about what those blinking lights are denoting. It could be a nine-one-one call to our police or fire, the annuals department, the librarian helping a patron find a book or attend a program. It could be social services, helping someone sign up for fuel assistance, a citizen trying to pay taxes, or the finance office printing checks for vendors. It could be the building department issuing a permit, or an engineer looking at a utility or weather maps for a project in town. At its core, the IST department helps the town function. But the, the IST department doesn't only perform administrative work. We strive to be community builders. You may have seen these signs around town, if you look, it's hard to see, the walk-up, drive-up, and connect. Back in July of twenty twenty, the IST department became aware of the Governor's Everybody Learns initiative. Uh, Bloomfield qualifies, and census data indicated that we have around seventeen hundred households that do not have access to high-speed internet. It's a true digital divide. Through the town's partnership with the Connecticut Education Network, we are able to procure and install outdoor wireless equipment for Crosser, McMahon, Winterberry Library, where closely with library, town hall, and right here in the human services facility. I know people nowadays think the word free is synonymous with scam. Uh, but in this case, the town and the state are providing free wires without a catch. The program has been so successful that we're currently working with the CEN, or the Connecticut Education Network, on expanding to more locations in town. So the town IST department performs many functions for administrative staff and the citizens of the town, and will, will continue to support all the plugs and blinking lights. And thank you for your passion and support. and will continue to support all the plugs and blinking lights, and thank you for your passion and support.
I'm back! And one of my other hats that I wear on my day job is purchasing and risk management. I had a phone call last week from a resident, unfortunately, I was not able to help. But she said to me, "What is risk management? What is a risk manager? What do they do?" So I said, "No, that's a really good question, nobody's really ever asked me that." So, what does a risk management do? We identify risks, and we take steps to minimize exposure. Now, some of those things are easy to figure out, you know, safety, you know, oh, that's an unsafe situation, physical safety, we need to fix that. Some are a little bit less easy to figure out, internal controls, where you might be risking the loss of money if we don't have appropriate internal controls. So maybe I would recognize that and give a recommendation to whoever the youth departments to fix that. One of our bigger, most frequent, and probably not have that yet, is some of our cyber risks. So what is something that we might identify with a cyber risk? We all hated two-factor authentication, and I don't know if anybody knows what that is, but I'll tell you, a great person saying, "That's when you gotta do it twice to get into whatever it is you're trying to get into," right? Not only do you have to put in a password, but then they'll send a text to your phone, and you've gotta put that number, or you have to have a security token on top of your password. That's two-factor authentication. So then I would work with IT to implement that, or suggest that maybe they take a look on that. But for the most part, risk management in Bloomfield is insurance. Insurance is expensive, what insurance am I talking about? What we call LAPP insurance, that's liability auto and property. We self-explain interior trigonometry, it would be property, crash would be auto, and then liability would cover other things such as unemployment practices, or some other things. We currently have thirteen holding claims spanning several years that we have workers' comments. I also manage the claim process for liability claims. And we also have workers' compensation service. Workers' compensation covers employees who get hurt on the job. Connecticut is what they call a no-call state, meaning if the employee did something really dumb that caused them to get hurt, they're still going to get to pay. There might be some type of adverse disciplinary action, but it would not be, you'd still pay them. While I place the coverage, HR manages the claims, and they manage the employees that are out on that. We share workers' compensation and LAPP policies with the Board of Education. And we can get them through a, what's known as Karma, Medicaid or local risk management association. I'm not quite sure of that, but.
Okay, on their executive session last night.
Oh, did it? Oh, because you probably talked about some that we all, I mean, they are the majority.
Personal management agency.
Agency, okay, so it's agency, thank you. They, most of us, the towns and Board of Education in Connecticut, use them. We use them as long as I can. Then we also place some other insurances, flood insurance for Crosser. Crosser, like, or even or not, we pay about twenty-two thousand dollars a year for flood insurance. And they're deductible. I wonder if anybody knows the deductible, they get an extra hundred Bloomfield bucks.
The deductible for?
Half a million dollars.
For what?
Seven thousand dollars.
The deductible for Crosser flood insurance.
Seven thousand dollars, half a million.
I'm gonna go ten million and one.
So Fran guessed it right on the nose.
What is it?
It's a hundred thousand dollars to double that. So we have to reach a hundred thousand dollars in expenses before we can get any future money. It's expensive. Probably one of the good reasons why with the passage of the Music Referendum, we have it above ground no longer in this flood zone. We also place smaller insurance coverages, like the tax collector, we buy insurance. Alright, so I'm gonna go on to purchase some real quick, and we have another opportunity to win some more Bloomfield bucks. As you can imagine, the town buys lots of things. We buy refuse removal, we buy kennel services for the dogs that are taken through our police department, ambulance services other than BBA, software licenses for our Zoom meetings that we hold and participate in, Microsoft, unit switches, our financial system, permits for our permit system, and a variety of other softwares. Plow lanes, office supplies, capers, road aid materials, including the de-icer that makes our roads safe in winter. So here's a few other opportunities where I'm gonna give out more Bloomfield bucks. So we buy electricity. Anybody want to guess what we pay just for the electricity? How much per kilowatt hour do you think? And again, I got another hundred Bloomfield bucks for whoever comes up.
Seventy cents.
How much?
Seventy cents.
Seventy?
Cents.
Okay, who else?
Should be about, right now, should, our size, probably about seven cents per kilowatt hour.
Fifteen, fifteen cents.
Any else want to guess?
Ten.
Ten? Seven?
Seven.
Seven cents, and then what did you say?
I said seven.
Three?
We got a tie here. He said it first.
He said it first.
He said it first. So Fran's going really good at this, can you tell me seven point four cents?
I don't know, this is all, this is all I do on the walk.
We buy gasoline for our police cruisers and the rest of our fleet, other than our truck.
Want to go over building materials, guys?
So let's see if Fran can guess how much we pay a gallon of gas, right now. Right now, our contract expires at the end of December.
When did the contract start?
A year ago, January first.
Two seventy-nine.
Three fifty.
In mid-range, mid-range on eleven.
Two seventy-nine, two seventy-nine.
Three dollars five.
Two eighty-five.
Two ninety.
Two hundred and forty. Two hundred and forty.
I'm on two seventy-five.
I'm gonna say one ninety-five.
Anybody else?
I go ninety-nine cents. We gotta get a discount, being a municipal.
So is it lowest go, well, if we don't have to pay tax?
Yeah, so the lowest, you go to the lowest thing. No, you can't do the IT.
So we're gonna do closest without going over?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so.
Let's give it a try.
It's a dollar seventy-one, can you believe that we've gone to the gas pump, like, oh, yeah. And that's how it is, contract expires, and we always have to buy more.
I think the homeless who dance contract expire, it's a lot, it's like years.
Yes, yes. We can also ride it up and down, but that's less sustainable for watching. And we use about sixty-three thousand gallons a year.
I mean, that goes up, does that go up too big, or do you just go?
That goes up too big, we bid that through a consortium, with the, we're in a regional consortium that we're part of, so we get the benefit of the bargain.
So I have another question, so I know we have, do we have suppliers in policy? Where we're diversifying our suppliers and our vendors and vendors, or do we have that? I know there's a construction, another construction, five, five million dollars, it's a special for thirty-six cents, set aside for the five million, but anything lower, do we have a program for that?
No, yeah. Alright, one more, diesel. How much do you think we pay for diesel? Now, that contract started in July.
July what?
July, July first of twenty-one, and it will go until June thirtieth of twenty-two.
Two, two oh nine.
Three forty.
Two.
Two twenty.
Two seventy-one.
Two ten.
I can easily, once this light says, I have eight.
Okay, we have a winner, I'm in the nose, a two-ten. This is the organ, just some division.
Thank you, and I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Do we have any internal audit procedures that can audit various departments, every other times a year, every other year, or is there any policy for internal audits?
No, we do, as part of our independent auditor, which we get every year, we do have, sometimes they'll audit a particular program. I know one time they audit in small cities, another time they audit in Berry Hills, California, so they'll do some.
Yeah, it's all a spot test sometimes, in order to.
And you're talking about the vacancies in accessories.
Yes.
Who's doing that?
So we currently have a sort of a temporary person coming in and helping us on a part-time basis. He is an assessor, he has the qualifications of senior agent, he's coming in, he currently have two vacancies, both the assessor and deputy assessor, so both we've got, they're very young, in order to keep the office up.
He perches his head, go down, and assumes duties, people are out for a day, and and I would also say, going back to Nancy, for all of the heads that she says that she leaders, those are significant responsibilities, it's a one-person office. So when you wonder sometimes, we hear from committees, all those councilors all the time, where is this our, where is this project, how projects is also, where's that coordinating? Because you've got one person trying to, but there are other examples of that throughout organizations, and we've got a lot to talk about, everybody.
I was wondering, now that we're renting our own money, if we could just cancel one of those.
Bitcoin.
Yes, you have to.
That's what New York is doing.
Is there a bowl open for Bitcoin?
But now is your time, I think, of where Finance.
I, yes, yep, we're, uh.
We can go both.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, sorry Joe, not very good. Great time. Ten minutes, ten minutes. And coming in, we can only do four. To make up a little, you think? We can only do four overwhelmingly, with seventeen hundred Bloomfield bucks, since the drainage.
That's alright.
The next highest vote getter was the parking improvements, nine hundred Bloomfield bucks.
You said parking?
Parking improvements, yes. Number three was a new bus for a senior. And after this, Bloomfield bucks.
That was an easy one, this is being recorded on.
The only reason she let me do it is because I told her I quit the senior. And the fourth one that we're going to be able to afford this year with our Bloomfield bucks are the masonry repairs at Town Hall, which came in at five hundred. The other ones we'll get, this is a future, like I always do. So thank you for playing Nancy. Okay, we're gonna move right along to Development Services with our Director of Development, Jose Guiner, and you can turn to page six to follow along with the presentations.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and congratulations on your election. I'm Jose Guiner, I'm your Director of Planning and Economic Development for at least the next three months. And after that, I'll be retiring, so. And as I told Stanley, just, you know, out of the forty-two years in the profession, I think certainly the last seven years here at Bloomfield have been the most enjoyable of the bunch of those forty-two, we really enjoyed working with the people here. Stanley said about community, and what you all have seen expressed during their campaigns, I think a hundred percent behind all of that. So anyway, I have with me here, our, we do have our Engineering Division, which is headed by our County Engineer, John D.C., and our Building Division, which is headed out by Kimberly Rogers. So, Bloomfield's Development Service, we really have quite a wide range of development services that we handle. We have the Building Division, which is the Chief Building Official. When I first started, we had one Chief Building Official, that was that, seven years ago. Now we have Chief Building Official, two full-time Assistant Build Officials, one part-time Assistant Building Official, and one Building Official, part-time, that is shared under contract with Charles Sinsberg, which was a, you know, very innovative program when we first tried to figure out how we're gonna step our needs at the time. So we do everything from existing and new construction, electrical plumbing, you may name it, you ask for a house or a building, the Building Department issues permits for even demolitions. Want to take something down, you can get a permit. So we do that, and over the last few years, and you can see from my report, our revenues have been steady, and during one period of fiscal year seventeen nineteen, we, I think we were fifteenth overall in the state of Connecticut for total construction permitted, in terms of value, and that includes big cities like Britain and the entire state of Connecticut, we were up there. So I had no problem going back before the council with, you know, asking for additional home, dealing with all that construction, so. And we'll be coming back for some more, and funding the budget, but that, more of that later. So we also do Economic Development, which I directly staff with help from Gomez and Dirk for our consultants, so you see Gomez and Dirk, Mike Gomez, Denise Robideau, Dave Kreiber. They all help out, and Dave Kreiber helps out, their business consultations and business attractions in industries. Mike Gomez is just a national expert on retail and economic trends, and Denise is quite great at experience with small businesses, and she's the one who calls everyone. If there's an issue with a small business relocating or getting lost out, the money goes out, and it helps them. As I said, we have our Engineering Division, which is, consists of our Town Engineer, we have a Deputy Town Engineer, and then the Civil Engineers also serves as the England Wellness Agent. We have a Geographic Information System Technician that does our GIS mapping, and our England Wellness Agent, liaison to the England Wellness Commission, and the Water Courses, England Wellness and Water Courses Commission, and Jonathan's on the Traffic Safety Committee along with our Deputy Town Engineer, myself, and Police Chief, and Captain, right?
Yep.
So we're part of the Local Traffic Safety Committee. And Planning and Zoning Division is myself, a liaison to Town Planning and Zoning Commission, Design Review Board, Town Council Land Use Department, Development Committee, also staff of the COVID-nineteen Recovery Committee. And unfortunately, during the last two years of COVID, we sort of let that drop, but we also had Historic Properties Renew Committee that was beginning to worry. We haven't really been since that, since this whole thing started. And we also have a Zoning Enforcement Officer, position's vacant currently. We had some interviews and have some promising candidates. Mike Facilla left after some twenty-some-odd years last January first, and we've had, you know, we've had to go out a few times to try to recruit someone for the job. Hopefully, this time, we found somebody. And we've been using the part-time, we wondered how we're doing it. We have two people coming in, total sixteen hours a week, to handle mostly enforcement complaints, nothing, nothing else, and also some work in the new. And then we have a part-time Environmental Planner, we're liaison to the Conservation and Environment Committee, and her duties right now are to come up with projects that, that will come up, that will keep us on a sustainable Connecticut, that's. We're at the bronze level, we're trying to get a silver level certificate. There are certain things that have, the town needs to do and document to get to that point, so she's been a bit mad at that, everybody, so. You know, hot topics, and that's what the slide's about, it says, and we do serve Bloomfield from start to finish. One thing I really do like about this job is, you get somebody walks in the door, has an idea, and then, you know, three, four years later, you see the idea, boom, you see it, and everybody that's in that department has helped to make that happen. So we're very customer service oriented, I don't. service oriented. I've worked in many towns. I think we have a pretty good reputation as high, high level customer service and dealing with buildings. And I know Kimberly said that she goes to building conferences and we get big marks from other building people. So I think everyone there is on board with that. And we always try to make it, if we don't know the answer, we try to get it. A lot of towns I've worked in, the rules are ruled. I don't ask what the rules are. I ask, is it a good idea? And if the rules don't support it, it changes. You know, go to planning and zoning commission, try to come up with something that makes sense. Obviously, you know, you can't just do that to everybody because sometimes it don't. It's not good for the town. But certainly, we don't stand by. Some of the hot topics I'm going to come before you. As Stanley briefly mentioned, we have a plan of conservation development, which we have to, by statute, update every ten years. And the last one we did was two thousand twelve. So we do math. Next year is our deal. The council has approved forty-five thousand capital improvement budget for the first round. And there's another fifteen thousand program for the next fiscal year to finish the job. So we have a total of sixty thousand dollars to, and we'll be going out pretty soon for giving more work to Nancy for an R and B, to get a consultant work to help with that. Department staffing is always a concern. We'll come back. One of the things we'll do, you'll see in our budget, is do we, you know, our building officials are not taking lunches. They're flat out. It's not a good situation. I keep telling them to take lunches. We try to give them overtime. But it's tough with family medical obligations. Additional work on the building, assistant building officials. So we, you know, we will be coming back to you in the budget presentation with a request for possibly deputy building official, which again, our building permit fees by law should not be revenues for towns. They're meant to cover costs. And the building department has consistently brought in three, four times their cost and revenue. So we have to give that serious thought. Some towns have been sued by builders association for, you know, not spending money back or overcharging them. So we want to. The other thing that's coming up, and the current council owners know, they've retired out of the tax increment financing districts. We adopted three of them for the town center, the Gabby Road, Toby Road area, and also, and also the Blue Hills Avenue corridor. So those policies are in place. Now we really have to come up with a good marketing campaign, let people know that we're open for business in those areas and try to promote. And I think a lot of the discussion that I've seen centers around what's happening with the Winterbury Mall. But we don't want to forget the other areas in town that also need some TLC and some promotion. We've also adopted complete streets in the last year. And that's, I think, will come into play when we, you know, review the gap included plan for public works projects and things like that, to make sure that we incorporate elements of those complete streets in the beginning, during the design process, rather than try to retrofit, which is a lot more expensive. So as things come up, you know, look for ways to incorporate the big street issues. And one of the projects that we're doing, actually, with some grant funds, is the Lower Blue Hills Avenue project, which should be out for construction next, at least the first part of next construction season. We've already seen the lines painted the way we want them to paint. And we've gotten positive feedback on the neighborhood. So they're sort of seeing it. We did a little road dive. And once we get the construction underway, you'll certainly see the street improvements, which are nice. Philly Park completion, which is great, that, you know, that reference in the past, it's another thing that our engineering departments are working hard on. And obviously, number six will be drainage. I might be go up during that. So that, we heard that, loud and clear as a thing. So that's it. And one of the things you'll get from us on our monthly reports and our roundtable is what's happening in Bloomfield. So a lot of things are happening in Bloomfield. We have a lot of construction going on, as I said. Building officials are out there doing inspections, not often reviewing plans. But we got phase three of the town center apartments. You can see right across from Town Hall, the brick is going up. It's starting to look nice. Everybody's, you know, look like a stick in a strassie at first. And now you're starting to see how the facade is going to fit in. So that's going up. Phase two of the town center apartments are about a hundred fifty units, across from Arrow Flats. And they're gone before Ellen Wellens. They're finally coming in for their, for their site plan approvals. That'll start going right after the forty-two units have been completed. And then the same developer who put together the master plan for the town center in phase one, two, three, has bought all the houses from basically the light at Charome Extension, all the way down to Gap Road and around the corner to the Brook, are all under his control. He's got master plan approval for another two hundred fifty units of housing there. You have to come back and get a site plan approval for that. Like every matter has been repurposed and has final site plan approval for forty-five units of housing. Kimberly's telling you that there's a permit off, they're doing interior demolition as we speak. So hopefully, you know, that project will get going along and sort of anchor the north end of that project, which is across from Geisler's, and hopefully connect down to the town center through. Unfortunately, the sidewalk, the road there is, the sidewalk won't go up that far. But we're hoping, and we did ask for them as part of their conditions, to connect through the Philly Park Trail System, at least during the good weather, to get people walking to the center. We have a brand new warehouse under construction on West Newberry Street, that Upfords Farm is going to utilize for distribution of its products. Correct Anticrace Academy's been taking up a lot of inspection time. They're completing, they're finally completing the construction of the school on Griffin North now. And that Thursday, just shops to let rid before TPZ to change the retail restaurant used to medical space. Unfortunately, Los Tapas and the wine store, we've already had Goman New York, Denise work with the wine store to try to relocate it to Geisler's Plaza. So I don't think we've been successful trying to relocate Tapas, but we're still working on it. But they're going to be putting in medical in that. They're going to add another three thousand square foot to that building and also proposing a new five thousand square foot building on the property. So that's new construction. And Privilege Drive, if you've ever, that's kind of hidden away. You don't see that. There's a hundred twenty-four unit duplexes on sixty-four lots. And they're rentals. I think we have our new town manager, the latest, newest president of that. So that's a new concept. You know, again, it's a type of housing that's not, you don't typically see. So it's, that's been so far successful, I think, in getting leases out there. Cottage Grove Road, that's been somewhat of an issue, is thirty-eight units of income-based housing and specialty housing that's been nearing completion. It's been going on forever. There's a lot of, a lot of problems with their subcontractors meeting code. And unfortunately, you know, we're getting, starting to get complaints from people who were supposed to move in because I thought they would have leases by now. There's nothing much we can do about it. But certainly, we're, you know, the building department's trying to do all it can to help the developer meet the code issues that were out there. In terms of recreation, Bloomfield tennis courts are out there. They got new clay courts, poolhouse. They did a lot of exterior improvements, investment during COVID. Their clay courts are the Roland Garros stipe, if you're familiar with the French Open. And as a Spaniard, they really are called Madrid, Madrid clay, even on the specs on the plans. So those should be ready for, to go in the summer. And again, Signa Contemporaries, you know, they have a ninety million dollar program to upgrade their facility here in Bloomfield, committed to staying here in Bloomfield. Town council gave them a tax break to do so, get deferment of taxes for rolling period. And again, Simsbury Bloomfield Connector Project, we're finalizing construction details on it. And we have project bidding expected early next year with construction follows. So that'll be a nice addition to the trail system. I think I got everything. Hopefully it wasn't too much. Yeah, and just so you said, one of the features that you saw in the email that I think the town manager saw and that Kimberly put together for us, is the things you don't see. You don't see the, a lot of times, you don't, you know, you just see what's being built, a nice shiny new office building or construction. There's a lot of people moving into town buying, you know, at least space that are coming from other towns like ABB, Bertec, and so on, and bring a, you know, significant number of employees into, I think Bertec was vacant, fifty-five different roles out for years. And so we've been successful. You know, we need to stress that too, because that, that doesn't take up green space. Those are buildings that are sitting there that are being repurposed and reused for economic development. And that's also a concentration on our part to try to attract people to vacant spaces. And we do keep a list of those spaces whenever somebody asks, we give them out.
And you'll be saying that kind of updates on a regular basis as our building division is in tune. I mean, they get to see first, you know, what our businesses are thinking. And, you know, sometimes we look at ourselves and think, you know, why don't we have more? We have certainly got to educate our community of what we do have and how fortunate. And just compared with neighboring communities, the level and diversity of our business and investor base is something to be very proud of, particularly given the size of our, of our community. And there's a lot more that we can, we can do. But we're pretty robust in our diversity of industry. Got some areas certainly that we're going to be focused on, such as the town center, so much more that we need to, we need to do there. But all is pretty well in Bloomfield, just from a status quo standpoint.
Jose, did I hear you mention that there's been some investments since the Winterbury Mall? Because that seems to be the big issue in the community about economic development, you know, what is the future?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, there have been investments. We've created a tax increment financing district along the town center, which hopefully will spur and incentivize the owner. I spoke with him not three weeks ago, just trying to get him to come into town and speak with their new town manager, to just try to get, get him to engage him and see what his plans for the future are. And he's out, he's out on the west coast. And he's, oh, I've got a lot of properties all over the country. Maybe, you know, next time I can buy there. He's not motivated. Doesn't seem to be motivated in any type of way to invest money to do the mall. So.
But then, on the other hand, we've got other businesses and industries that are invested and really want to partner with the town. Jose and I, and I should say that our economic development consultant, now that COVID is lifting, we're going to be going out on a regular basis, such as a tour of a facility. Is it Derengene?
Derengene, one of the oldest.
Metal processing. And we got a tour of that plant. I mean, I'm talking about the most scarce types of metals and expensive, everything that you can imagine. They've got a new manager that came in. We're going out and meeting with companies such as that. One of the things that we learned is, you know, they're hiring. And these are jobs where they provide apprenticeship programs, where you come in making close to a hundred thousand dollars. They didn't know about the Chamber Job Fair that's coming up. So they are now partnering with the Chamber. They will be here in this building in a few weeks to let, to let our community know, here are the opportunities. But we're going to be out there active with those who are invested in our community and those who aren't interested. I think we're going to be working very closely with council to see what we can do to either get them invested or to get them out.
Jose, thanks for the presentation. You did, we did mention about the building revenue fees. And I do agree with you, it should not be perceived as a revenue account. I think this is something that we can definitely talk to auditors when they come in with their year-end audit report, because I see this, it should be reflected as a contra account to offset whatever expenditures for building, you know, inspectors and so on, anything associated with that. I think this is something we have talked about, not only this, but across the board, on how we report the finances and truly reflect it. We talked about the board of ed, the schools. Are we reflecting all the expenditures on the town side to truly show exactly what that percentage is? So this is something definitely I think we should talk about, because I think the way it's reflected now, you're absolutely correct. It's kind of deceiving, because we get that report, we go like, wow, we have all this building revenue. But there's another side to that. There's expenses associated with that, that sometimes can get us in the negative if you think about it. So.
And we're not, Kimberly said, she's working extra hours, weekends, and not taking lunches. And a lot of times, the assistant building officials aren't, which, you know, they're, again, they're very customer service oriented. They haven't complained or thankfully not agreed to anything. But I keep telling them, take, take your lunch. Your health is a lot more important to us than whether you can spend an extra hour to, you know, doing inspections. But again, being customer service oriented, we, you know, we want to tell people, if people want to do something inspect, especially this time of year when, you know, furnaces and starting to go on all that, you really have to start triaging and being able to respond quickly to some of those issues.
Do you have a question?
Just one comment and one question, a quick, both of me quick. I can personally attest to the customer service level over at that office. I've, starting with Jose, helping me get through design review with TPZ and Kimberly using small enough words so I can understand the building code. As I, as I try to expand my own business here in town. One quick question, phase four town center apartments, has that actually gotten a zone change and approval?
Yeah, that's, that's gone through the master plan and zone change. So they, that's now a special development district. Again, the whole area is currently a business center district. And that's one thing you've got to look at, even down, all those homes out at Jerome Drive. In theory, you could have a shopping center down Jerome Drive, if the market were there for it, people could put in it. So we need to start thinking about that. But they did get STD arguing that, you know, should have really had a business center district that should be more residential to support the center. It's not a, not a mixed use or a commercial use. So that's, I guess, the last plan, you know, that was part of the plan to intensify the town center, hopefully spur some new businesses. And I think that's why places like Republic World, whether the store on COVID and Elizabeth and even the Cajun Fish Market, that opened up in Amnes, opened up, hopefully they'll, they'll do well. And, you know, as we provide more density in the town centers, two hundred units and arrow flats that replaced that houses. So that's got to, that's got to make some difference, I think, in the merchants in the center. Yeah. And that's the place you want to grow, not outside, where there's no public transport, walking. You see a lot of people walking, water or dogs.
Question?
I may have missed it, but do we have any creative programs to help small businesses that have been affected by COVID-19? I know there was the COVID recovery committee. I kind of, this is not scientific, kind of did some kind of soft, you know, rounds of business, asking them, particularly the small businesses, have they heard of the COVID relief committee? And no one's reached out to them. Do we have any plans to kind of help support those businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19?
Yeah, good question. Denise Robideau from Goman New York Cast, she has an extensive list of businesses. She's sent email blasts, contacted people. We had, we had a series of webinars when this first thing started, trying to get, they're recorded. Unfortunately, weren't well attended, but we did record it. We sent out email blasts. And she personally helped people apply for some of those loans if they needed assistance. So we did have that available. It's one thing to have it available. Like I said, you can try every effort, but sometimes small businesses are, for whatever reason, either too busy or don't trust government or whatever, don't avail themselves of those resources. And we do have a lot of money coming in. You know, let's, let's put our creative thinking caps, you know, after we find out what the town has lost, maybe have some small business assistance programs that we can use that money for. business assistance programs that that we can use that money for.
Just a follow up. Going to move into the next phase of the new businesses that are looking to come in. Do we have a small business welcome center or a coordinator? Is Goman New York supporting small businesses? Like, hey, this is what you do for licensing. This is what you do for, you know, building inspections, et cetera. You know, here's how you, we connect you to the Chamber of Commerce. Do we have any programs to support that?
Other than, I'm the liaison, I'll be attending. I do attend the Chamber of Commerce meetings and try to keep Vera, some country of the data as to who's who we're talking to, who's applied for permits, so she can get out front and contact them. And certainly we do make it known, if someone comes in the door, you know, a lot of times you've got people with ideas of mom and pop, the first thing I'll do is I'll I'll give their number to Denise, and she'll call them, make sure they get a good business plan. She walks them through what, everything they they're going to need to do. You know, got a great idea for chicken, you know, for a restaurant or something like that. But they don't realize what all the, what it all entails, the health codes, the type of equipment you have to buy. You can't just use your own kitchen. You have certain standards that you have to meet. So she makes sure that that she puts people through to the right. And when they come in the door, we do meet people ahead of time. We try to tell them, here's your, here's your plan for success. But again, you know, there's, a lot of times it's people coming to us and asking us. We don't have a really good outreach other than, you know, putting out, like I said, I send everything I get to the Chamber, and they put up, they put it in the newsletters, send an email blast to their members, and Denise sends it to her contacts that she has.
Denise is with the Chamber or with Goman New York?
Denise is with Goman New York. So the Chamber has their list, she has a list. They may or may not be members of the Chamber, but we 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 send it out to everybody, all the notices I get from the from the Fed, Federal Small Business Administration regarding all the applications, all the funds grants that are.
So to get to your question more specifically, we can be doing more. I would give credit to Goman New York. As far as consulting groups go, I think they're top notch, and their representatives and their multiple who seem very committed to Bloomfield. And we have at least three of their representatives in regularly participate. But they're also supporting their large company, I don't know the number, of other governments that they're that they're supporting. Here's an example of the director, whose title is planning in economic development. He wears the multiple hats. Economic development is an important one. Jose personally, and I don't know the number, but I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say he supports seven or eight committees, boards, subcommittees. That is an investment of time and effort, you know, agenda preparation, follow up. If he's able to do anything else, I don't know how. And so we're going to come back to this question. If we really want to get to the next level, are we prepared to invest in these things that are most important to council for programs and just that? I mean, really being there for our small business community. For those of you who are new to the to the council, I don't know how many of you kept up, but through these federal government programs from COVID, we literally have six point two million dollars that we know that we're getting. We've gotten half of it. We've got two years to spend it. The clock has started ticking. And it's four programs, such as limited resources, where we may need more, that we've got pretty wide discretion, that will correlate to our budgeting process this year more than likely. But as well as those programs that really are meant to help out the various stakeholders in the community, for the small businesses, neighbors, I mean, whatever, wide that again. And we've got to get that moving. Part of my worry, and I'll go back to Nancy, she's left, wearing all of those hats. But to do anything, we have to go out and do things competitively. So far as important as that program is, are we devoting the time just to get it kicked off? And I have a lot more to say, you know, when we get the subcommittees updated to bring you all fully up to the speed. We've got a lot on our plate. When I first got here, I think I was told, you go back, and Joe probably, Dr. Hels is better than anybody, but go back twenty or thirty years, and I don't think the staffing level in Bloomfield, despite growth, more diversity, more needs, has grown. We've basically remained flat.
So just a follow up, two more follow up questions, and then I promise I'm done. The Matrix study was about four years ago, where that study was supposed to take a look at departments that, you know, need more FTEs, needed to take FTEs and reship little here prioritized from a staff perspective. Have you taken a look at that draft Matrix study that the council four years ago paid for? And if you have, would that be something that we would explore based on the conversations you just had with some of the members of the council here, to figure out where the priorities are, right, from a FTE, right? If if you have a capital improvement, but you could say you're you're invested in invested in small businesses or infrastructure, Philly Park, or the Greenway, as Joe wants to say, do you have enough people in the engineer department to handle those projects? The library is coming. That's going to be new, it's going to be bigger. Do we have enough staff to meet the current needs of the of the, basically what you're saying. So have you taken a taken a look at that Matrix study and already engaged that the firm who did it to kind of reassess that to determine what what we need?
I'm aware of the Matrix study, and I can't tell you all of the reasons why it was parked for as long as it's been parked. I need to find out more about that, but whether it's the Matrix study or some other partner that we have, we have got to take those kinds of tools and move them ahead. We can no longer allow things that are needed to be on the shelf. A true staff assessment of this organization is well past it. And if I cite how long I understand, since we've simply gone in and done just a simple overview of the study and implementation, have more current job descriptions and those kinds of things, I think it's well over twenty years old, which is pretty bad.
I mean, clearly, this is not the place to kind of get into the weeds.
Right.
But it would be helpful to sort of prioritize to find out from your area what you find most important, so that we can find ways to to support that.
Definitely get it in my pleasure, Pastor.
Oh, yeah, model clear. You lobby well.
One more question about Goman New York. Sorry, one more question about Goman New York. The consultant who helps small businesses, does she require to do a certain amount of hours inside to help?
We don't require, I mean, she's she works at, when I call her, she's, I talked to her twice today. But no, we don't, we don't do billable hours. I think it's any project we've asked of them, they've done it, they've done it.
More innovative.
In a timely fashion and very professionally.
Thank you.
Everything from zoning regulations to, we have planners on staff that can sometime help.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we'll move on.
No, yeah. Actually, just a just a quick one. Yeah, I know we have quite a few medical offices on Cottage Grove, quite a few medical offices. I was wondering if we can't relocate Tapas, for example, which, I don't go into Tapas, but sometimes when I'm visiting, when I'm visiting Gillette Wine, you know, I see how many people are in Tapas, and it's a place that's very popular in town at that specific location. And even I feel like where Gillette Wine is just like perfect. They have their own clientele that comes in. You have that group of people that are experts in their field and can really point you to, you know, to to the right places. If we can't relocate those places successfully, do we still move forward with this request, move forward with this application to transition the space?
Yeah, the, yeah, fortunately, that's that's, they're the landlords, they can do whatever, you know. But the good news is, I think we we did find the space for the wine store in the center, actually in the town center. So we were, they'll be able to transition Tapas. Last I heard was Denise has been trying to work with them, but they're looking to do a takeout only somewhere last time.
Oh, wow.
So, but again, nothing's lost. I think we continue, you know, people keep telling us, like, we have that really light opposition. I've had Leicester, part of my regular rotation, places I go to. But again, we can only do so much. The corridor there for Cottage Grove Road, for better or worse, was was planned for. That's the only spot about, that's developed in special district, but the other, it was down the road. It was all planned out to be up the medical offices, our only professional office on it. They have a concentration, so it's pretty much the plan.
Okay, move on.
This will have to be our last.
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly add, and I'm going to insert into a Q and A. I just want to add, just, I know Jose and his team at Goman New York have done a really good job in trying to outreach to small business. But the one thing you have to keep in mind, a lot of those small businesses have their own financial advisor, their own accountants who are facilitating those loans that you're talking about. So while you may not be seeing them coming into the town, most folks don't think that they need to go into the town of Bloomfield to get help with that, because obviously they want to keep that stuff internally. So just keep in mind that there's other avenues that they're using. So don't feel that the work that you're doing is not really reaching folks, that they have their own way to do it. Just keep in mind.
Thank you.
So I appreciate so much.
Thank you. So next, we will have presentations from our town clerk, Margery Phillips, and our town attorney, Mark Higman. We'll ask if you both can join us.
We're expert with this department.
She definitely talked about elections too, mate. I think this is the last.
I'll be quick and then Mark. I was just going to tell you a little about myself. I'm your town clerk. I've been doing municipal work since nineteen eighty-four. I started to become a local town clerk in nineteen ninety-two. I am Connecticut certified and internationally certified, presently working on my master certification. I've served on the executive board of the Connecticut Town Clerks Association, and was appointed by the Secretary of State for to serve on the Connecticut State Certification Committee, so mentoring and getting other town clerks uncertained. I was also appointed by the New England Town Clerks Association President, serve on the New England Municipal Clerks Institute Academy Board of Directors, which is a real honor, only two from every New England state is served on this board. I love this town. I love history. I take great pride serving you, serving this community. So, yeah, we're very lucky to be there. And communities major might change in moments. As you can see, when people buy a house, you know, we do land records, recording, indexing, and scanning of land record documents, maps, and all the encompasses. We're there when there's a birth, a child, marriage, unfortunately, when there's deaths in the family. We do burial permits, cremation permits, disintermating permits, and all the encompasses. Of course, you know, we do elections, issuing absentee ballots. We work with the registrar of voters to prepare for an election primary referendum, responsible for various reports that we must file in a timely manner with the Secretary of State's office, legal notices, petition qualifying and certification, certifying the election results, and all that encompasses. We do records management. We house and safeguard all the town's permanent public records, official repository of notices, agendas and amendments of the various boards and commissions. We manage retention schedules. And then we have miscellaneous duties, and there's more that I can report on, you know, notarizing of documents. We issue dog licenses, hunting fishing licenses. We report military discharge, training certificates, local permits, and so much more. And as the archivists of the town's records, I take this role very seriously, applying for grants and the leave for preservation, conservation of the town's oldest records. We not only preserve the town's records from past generations, but also prefer preserved ways, records for future generations. What you might not know is a hundred percent of what the town clerk's office does is required by law. We are processing land records, vital records, and all other miscellaneous duties. We are bringing in fees in the range of seven hundred thousand to a million plus dollars a year. There are laws and penalties if the work is not done in a timely manner. And one last thing to say is, the town clerk's office faces new challenges every year with new laws passed by the legislature that has continuously required our office to add additional functions to our daily operations, seasonal duties. There are always additional amendments, changes to election laws that we must apply. There are always bills that the legislature is discussing that have a direct impact on the town clerk's office. One in particular that is being discussed presently is no excuse absentee balloting and or early voting. And with over fifteen thousand voters, this could make a huge impact on our office. I just want to say quickly that you all have been sworn into office. You're going to be coming into the town clerk's office to sign the oath book and get your certificate. And we're also going to be handing out the code of ordinances and the charter, okay? The charter, there's a, there's a small, at the town, the charter, it's very small. It's really good for you to read that verbatim. Now, when it comes to all these ordinances, you could just kind of, you look at the headings of each chapter, familiarize yourself a little bit. So if you ever think there's something that is an issue, you might remember that chapter. Say, let me go look and see that. So now I'm going to turn this over to our town attorney, Mark Higman.
Thank you, Margery. We are very fortunate, maybe blessed, to have Margery as as our town clerk. I will tell you that I've worked with a few, and I consider her our mother hen. She she looks after everything. Sometimes she's a bit of a pain about it, but better better too much than too little. She really goes above and beyond, and I have found that she's made my job a little easier. And we frequently touch bases and share thoughts and ideas, make sure we're on the right path. So I encourage folks to utilize her her knowledge of the town and what's required. She knows a lot more than just, you know, how to file paperwork and issue permits and things of that nature. As you heard, there's a lot more to the job. She'll tell you how overworked and understaffed they are. You know, I listen politely and, you know, try to move the conversation. So I prepared a few handouts. I hope you got them. Yes?
Director, your schedule.
So I I don't intend to read them to you, but I'm going to hit a few high points. First, you know, what is the town attorney? The town attorney under our charter is the chief legal officer for the town, represents the town of Bloomfield. But that includes, obviously, the town council, the town manager. Those are the people who I have the most contact with, the most interaction with. And most people's eyes, that's who I represent. And that's true, but not for a minute do I forget that I also represent everyone. So when I offer my advice and my counsel, I I keep that in mind. So, you know, just bear that in mind as we may discuss things down the road. I've been doing it. I've been doing it for quite a while. I may be the longest-serving municipal attorney in the state, if not very close to it. Still, I look very young, a rich person. I put the gray in just so people think I'm going to watch. So let me jump into the few things I shared with you. The first one is our standards of official conduct. And if there's any provision of our code of ordinances that you must read, must read, it's this, and it's only a couple pages. But if you don't and you get yourself into trouble, shame on you because you didn't read it. It's pretty simple and it's pretty clear. It defines employee, and that's anyone basically who gets paid by the town, regardless of full-time, part-time or what. An official, which is different from an employee, is anyone holding elected or appointed office. Obviously, any of you who got elected, you're an official. I'm an official because I'm an appointed officer, the town treasurer, the town clerk, and it lists who they are there. Conflict of interest. You hear it all the time. People throw that around, you know. It's very much in vogue. You need to be aware of what officially constitutes a conflict of interest. Because you can't say later, well gee, I didn't realize, I didn't know if it's right here, okay? So certain things are spelled out. The use or non-use of confidential information, gifts and favors. Several years ago, a group of, I believe it was council people, maybe some more, a few town staff and I toured the Home Goods facility shortly after it was open. And, you know, we went, it was very interesting and it was very nice. And as we're leaving, they handed us an envelope. You know, I thought it was like a thank you for visiting kind of note. When I got back to my office and opened it, it was a thank you note with a gift card in it. And I don't remember the exact amount, but it says here in our code that no official or employee shall solicit a gift or accept any gift having substantial value from any person who to his knowledge is interested directly or indirectly in any manner whatsoever. So you think it's pretty broad, it is, in business dealings with the town, okay? So I sent a note out to everyone who attended that day, you know, hope you enjoyed receiving your gift card. Unfortunately, under our code of ordinances, I'm of the opinion you can't keep it. And we need to, I think I suggested that we give it to social services and that was done. But, you know, keeping a fifty or seventy-five dollar gift card, like, what can you, you buy a lot of influence for seventy-five dollars? I doubt it.
You could buy a lot of home goods.
But, you know, it's, it's not permitted, okay? If you have an interest, you're obligated to disclose it if something comes before you and you're bored. Disclosure of financial interests, you've heard from Marguerite about that, make sure you file those a time requirement. Next handout is FOI, Freedom of Information. I've just given you a couple portions of it, but they're the most important parts, okay? It defines what a meeting is on the first page, defines what a public agency is, defines what a caucus is. A caucus is, in most respects, exempt from the rules related to meetings. What's the difference between a meeting of public officials and a caucus? The caucus, I'm sorry, the meeting is subject to Freedom of Information laws, okay? Publishing notice, being open to the public, minutes, things of that nature. Whereas a caucus, which is defined as solely members of the same political group. So all Democrats, all Republicans, all Libertarians, if they are registered in town as a caucus group, can meet themselves even if that group, and let's use the town council for example. There's nine members of the council. A quorum is five. When you have a quorum, you're subject to FOI. But the Democratic caucus, the six members of the Democratic Party can meet together and it's not considered a quorum and therefore it's not considered a meeting under the law. If you have a question about the differences and the impact, feel free to call. We've defined public records, executive sessions. Executive sessions are an exception to the open meeting requirement. Personnel, search committees exempt, pending claims. So there's definitions there for it. The third handout, which I provided for you, are the town council rules of procedure. I strongly advise council members to read them several times. I go back and read it periodically myself when an issue comes up. If you anticipate an issue, I suggest you look at it. These are the rules of order for the council. They say these control, if it's not addressed here, and this doesn't pretend to address every possibility, then it says Roberts Rules of Order, then control. But this trumps Roberts Rules of Order, okay? The final thing is a little, and it's entitled Roberts Rules Chi-Chi, okay? And I've given you some ideas how to navigate through Roberts Rules. I don't pretend to have memorized these things. It's very difficult. If you have nothing else to do, maybe you could do that, but the point is know where you can look, you know, for the answers to these things. Roberts Rules is this thick. It's a smaller verb, but it's this thick. This is a little chi-chi for the most typical matters that you're going to come up with and deal with. Town attorney defends the town, represents the town in both court, in agencies, in negotiations, anything involving the interests of the town of a legal nature. I've, over the years, been involved as a kind of adjunct staff member, acting perhaps more as a general advisor or a staff member than technically a lawyer just because of my background and history with the town. For the few you don't know, I was born here, I was educated here, I've lived here for close to seventy years. Joe is the only one who can claim a longer tenure. Quite a bit longer, by the way. And I've held most of the offices in town. I've been a member of the fire department for over forty years. It gives me a perspective that's rather unique. And it's helpful for me and I think the town benefits from it as well. I know a lot of the folks in town. That doesn't translate into anything magical. But I know who may have an interest in something. I may know who's been involved with something. I may have served with some of them, be it on the council or zoning board or the weapons board or the fire department. It's, it just gives me a little more background and, you know, I bring that to the table when I'm dealing with issues. My office phone number is published. You'll get it in the directory. Please feel free to call me. Some of you do, some of you haven't. If you don't feel the need, that's fine. I just want you to know that I encourage you to do so. I try to respond promptly. Can't always tell you what you may want to hear, but I'm going to tell it to you straight. And you can bank on it. And, you know, I've always found in my practice of law privately as well as for the town that it serves us well. I guess that's my time. So perfectly.
So Mark? Yeah. Thanks for that. And I was kind of sitting here pondering, I wonder if Marguerite had to kind of give a little synopsis about you, how would that turn out?
He's probably written almost every ordinance.
But here is a, not a question, but I think this will serve at least my colleagues who are serving for the first time on the council because I made this mistake. And when it comes to the open meeting law, right? Sometimes, let's say I send an email out to the full council that includes the town manager about any topic, right? Now, if someone then replies to everyone, that becomes a public meeting. But if they respond to just less than four, you could have that type of activity. That's something that you just have to make clear. What if now you blind copy your colleagues? If I was to send something out, blind copy everyone, but send it to me, now you're forcing them, they can't respond to all. What is the best approach to deal with that, to avoid it? Because it's a serious issue that could turn into something.
It is, and it's a tricky one. And most people don't appreciate or understand it's an issue. The safest way to deal with it is you just don't do it. You send out, if any one of you has a burning issue that you want to share with your colleagues, you send it out. But there's no, there's no mass replying back and forth and conversing and whatnot. It's really got to be something to the effect, hey, I'm really concerned about the following. These are some of my thoughts and I'd really like to have this discussed by the group at our next committee meeting, council meeting, whatever. You're free to pick up the phone, okay? And you're even free to email an individual. But it's the group dynamics that are going to get you into trouble. And, you know, you got to be careful because in good faith, you could say, well, yeah, I sent out the initial everyone and someone sends back reply to me, but someone else hit reply all, you know, we all have done it, you know, innocently. Hit reply all, oh my God, what did I do? You know, I didn't mean to send that. The best way to avoid getting into trouble, so to speak, or crossing the line, is just not to do it. I know it's counterintuitive to today's day and age of, you know, instant emails, instant reply, instant sharing. You got, the answer is openness and public discussion and disclosure trump everything.
So here's a follow-up to that. So when the town manager sends an email out to everyone, can we reply to all to the town manager or that also becomes, it goes to everybody?
Well, you said reply all to the manager, or I mean, can all of you reply to the manager?
If the town manager sends an email to the council staff, including that, it's happened regularly. If I respond to all, that includes back again town council, does that also?
Yeah, I think arguably that's, that's a problem, as crazy as it seems.
Yeah, yeah.
But the whole idea is, think of it this way. You, your colleagues and maybe staff in this case, could be twenty of the most influential folks in town, are now discussing amongst themselves in a private manner, a matter of interest.
Might as well be a meeting. That's good because like I said, it happens.
But you can individually reply.
Correct, no, I understand that.
I have a different question. As far as your work for the town and you allocate what you do, what's that allocation? Are you labor negotiations, advice to council, do you farm out work?
We have two and a half, we'll call it attorneys. The half is bond council, who only is called upon when we're doing the bond issue. So it's out there, but not a, not a big thing. It's, it's general council, the town attorney, myself, and we have labor council. And that's been the arrangement forever. A separate attorney, his name is William Ryan, he's out of New Haven. He represents thirty or more municipalities. But he also represents, and this is why he's particularly effective, he also represents private clients, corporations as well. So he knows the private sector and the public sector. And he is on a retainer with the town, which is part of the town attorney budget. We don't have anyone else actively or regularly representing the town. If there's a conflict of interest, personal conflict, like one was a tax appeal from someone who had been my client for many years. In fact, it wasn't when the appeal was filed. I ceased representing, but I had for so many years. I asked another attorney to handle it, just so there wouldn't be the appearance of impropriety. Frankly, with the exception of two major property tax appeals, I've handled and I do handle them all. There's very little that gets farmed out. Primarily because I've just been doing it long enough that I have the experience to do it. So I do it. In those cases where I can't or we need a particular high level of expertise, then we will look for somebody else. But again, in the last couple of years, it's been two people on a couple of tax cases and one person on a couple of property tax appeals where I have represented the two people in the past. Thank you again. My number is available to you. My email is available to you. Please feel free. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our presentation. I don't know if you have any.
I've done acknowledgements. I thank you all for coming and next week is very important. In addition to other departments, we have the school board, fire districts, the health district also coming. So we look forward to continuing.
And it's photo day.
Photo holiday.
And please bring your name cards back.